Clerk Garcia, can we call the committee hold its order, please?
Good evening. Caldwell?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Blasia?
Here.
Bates?
Here.
Habon?
Here.
Palaszak?
Here.
Bruckman?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Aidais Mayer?
Okay, we have a couple items from Dave Halsberg, from the Burwin Development Corporation. First on the list, sixty-eight oh four Windsor. David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I wanted to give you an update where we are with negotiations with our preferred developer. I'm hoping that after this, my comments, that you can please the progress that we've made. So these are basically the salient points of this transaction. First of all, that during the construction period, the property will be reimbursed, the property taxes that it pays. Right now, since we own it, it has a zero property tax bill, but it would have a relatively inconsequential tax as being a property under construction. Second, throughout the balance of the life of the TIF, the developer will be reimbursed up to 1.2 million dollars plus interest from the TIF as a result of the property taxes being paid. If you'll recall, they were looking for a 1.75 million dollar incentive from us, but paying for the property for $350,000. Of which, that 350, that 350,000, we would be paying back to them with interest. So why not just reduce it off the principal to begin with and go from the 1.75 million to a 1.4 million dollar number? Additionally then, we spoke to them and said, hey, we need to cut this number down. We worked on their numbers and reduced that by $200,000, bringing that figure down to 1.2 million. We then talked about building permit fees for the project. They would be listed at 1% of the, of the cost of the project. They would be seeking a waiver for parking, which we already knew was going to happen as part of this project. A waiver for the requirement for a loading dock, where we, there's no ability to put that off of Oak Park Avenue or to put that off the alley. So what we'll be looking to do is creating almost like a kiss and ride spot in front of the building, which can be used as a kiss and ride unless we're having drop off or we're having a, a delivery going on, somebody moving in and moving out. But that would be at the developer's expense. I heard from council members that said, hey, that bedroom that's up towards the front of the unit needs to be shifted back. So we've got the architect moving that back to the rear of the unit on a three-quarter wall. And the reason we went with a three-quarter wall, because we still needed light to get to that unit under the building code requirements. So we satisfactorily addressed that issue. The developer is happy that there is strong additional commercial interest in the market, but we won't know until we actually are able to do letters of intent and accept those. Their preferred activity would be residential, excuse me, would be the commercial units all occupying the first floor. But if that can't be supported in the marketplace, then the work-live units are the next best thing for them. One of the things we noticed that as we reviewed all of the codes of the city is we have an archaic code. That may not surprise many of you. It goes back to 1953, when the population of, of Berwyn was about 52,000 people. And there was an effort, I think, to, this is my interpretation, I can't find it factually anyplace, but there was an attempt to regulate the types of people that were coming into our community. So this requirement said that every dwelling unit for apartment use had to be 900 square feet. Well, we all know the smaller the unit, the more affordable they actually can be. So that code that, that from 1953 really does need to be addressed. There are different ways that we can address it. We'll need to address it as part of the project, just to make things correct. I think there have been potentially projects that have been built in the city since 1953 that are less than 900 square feet per dwelling unit. In fact, you can look around at a lot of the two stories and say, they were built in the 60s. How did this happen? So we'll make the correction and, and I think we can do that, you know, a couple of ways. We can do it based off an average of the number of units that are there. That way we get a diversification, or we can lower the standard. I challenge a little bit about lowering the standard, because then you could get, that's the minimum bar and everybody then, you don't want a building with just 500 square foot units. The smallest units in this building proposed are 531 square feet. And if I add all those units up that are under 900 square feet, that would represent 41% of the building. If I took on average what these unit sizes are, we would hit that 900 square foot number. So I'm happy to hear any comments that-
Is that in the zoning code or is that in the International Building Code?
International Building Code.
Okay, so the International Building Code has not changed that?
It has not. The City of Chicago has a local amendment.
Okay.
Their requirement is a, a bedroom unit roughly about 120 square foot, then a kitchen area or, and living area about 150 square foot with an adjoining bathroom.
Well, I would suggest though, that we do an amendment then to our ordinances itself. We don't have to go through zoning because it's not in the zoning code. We, we can do different than the International Building Code, as long as we print it out. So that would be our suggestion, is probably send it to attorney to get that drafted. You say 600 square feet, though?
Their smallest unit is 531 square feet. I, my suggestion to council would be that we do it on average of the number of units that are there. So hence, we've got four, we've got 41 units in that building proposed. You go ahead and take the square footage and say, on average, it's gotta be, and I'm making up a number here right now, 750 square feet. And I can put some more devil to the detail and, and send it around council for feedback.
But if we do that on the average, wouldn't that prohibit then, say, some of our other smaller units from having smaller apartments then?
Well, they would be grandfather, what, anything that exists would be grandfather non-conforming.
Granted, yes.
Anything new then would say, whatever we pick as a number, that would be, have to be the average.
So we'd have to say, new construction in or anything over 50% remodeling or something of that nature?
Yeah, that would work.
You'd, you'd still need a minimum, though, right? In order to, you'd still need a minimum, though, right, in order-
Yes.
-not have like a hundred square foot, you know-
Correct. But if he does it by the average of the units, that it has to average out this, then that, that would give you your, your per unit-
Yeah.
-depending on how many units are in the building.
Yeah.
The International Building Code specifies a number closer to about 500 square feet. It is our local amendment that pushed it at the 900 back in 1953. So I think just look at the demographics of the community in 1953.
Okay, but the International Building Code that we've adopted, though, would have changed our 1953?
No, because you've never taken off your, off the amendments. Now, we've got council looking at that issue right now.
Okay.
I've got Michael Mars doing that.
When we adopted the International Building Code, it should have wiped that out.
Okay. It's still on your books.
Okay.
So that's the other issue that, that to do. To give you a sense of how excited the developer is right now, he'd like to fast-track all permits, make applications sooner than taking title, so he would be doing that at risk. He would like to go ahead and demo, start demo in a basement, an abatement of the building throughout the winter, again, at his risk. Reason he wants to do that is take advantage of the cold winter months, that less dust gets produced and gets traveled around. There are abatement issues that have to happen, less people are traveling around. So for, for their purposes, that would be ideal to go ahead and move forward. And starting to replace all the windows, because all the windows would be replaced as part of this. We'd keep the window openings, puncture all the same size, keep that historic nature of the structure. But the positive of this is, you've got a developer says, hey, I'm going all forward because I realize that if I don't go ahead and get the project going, I'm not getting the increment that's going to be able to be generated. If I don't generate the, the increment myself, I don't get it towards the incentive agreement that's been set up. So I, I think, all of the comments I've heard from council members, we're coming back with all positive news towards everything you've said. I would say the weakest component that we have right now, that I haven't given you assurance on, that you've asked for, is that the first floor would be all commercial.
And if you could push that, Dave, because I happened to talk to the architect myself today, because he has a property here in Berwyn. I talked to him about that different piece of property. He's still thinking the workplace for the first level. So make sure you push that with, with whoever the developer is.
I did. I had a call with them today, just reviewing the facts that I was going to share with council to make sure that they were in concurrence, that what I'm representing to you has been as certain by them as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions with regard to this matter before I move on.
For the 531 square foot apartments, are those studios or one bedrooms?
Those are one-bedroom units. Thank you. And I think when you talk about, some of council members wanted to make sure that there was affordability in the units. The easiest way that we can help on affordability issues is a smaller size. Because if puncture comes back down, at the end of the day, what's it cost to build the space? And the bigger it is, the more it costs, the more the rent needs to be derived in.
Could we also think about maybe, as you two brought up, addressing whether it's a one-unit or a studio with different sizes too? Right? In the, in a modification of the order?
Within the code change?
Correct.
Yeah, we can look at that.
Right.
I was, I was, I was sharing a story with others. I've got a son in San Francisco who's got a 440 square foot apartment, and he pays $3,000 a month. But it's silliness of just what rents are based off location, location, location. And Sarah's just nodding her head and saying, yes. I can see the same over here. We all recognize that. We have a great location that will facilitate transit-oriented, oriented design right across the street by taking the train into the city in less than a 20-minute trip.
Any other questions on sixty-eight oh four?
What, oh, just one more.
Go ahead.
So your one bedrooms, would it go up to two bedrooms max, three bedrooms? Okay.
We have got a, a couple of three-bedroom units on the second floor.
Okay. Thank you.
I can give that specific breakdown. I'll, I'll come back to you. I'll just send it by email, but don't reply. I'll just simply go ahead and take a look at the information and that way I'll give you the breakdown, per unit, on the square footage, what the average then is total, and take some of your feedback then to go ahead and address the code change that we would make to the building code.
Anybody else question?
So pretty much the same as what you got us from the last meeting was 200,000.
Yeah, I think that you were telling me to beat him up as much as I could. He came in at 6:2. He left at 5:11.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. I'll regret it all. As long as you get us the, the information about where it's located and everything, the breakdown, maybe the code. So thank you very much for your work. I think that it was a lot easier. So let them hear.
You're welcome.
Is the BDC expressing interest in the commercial area for them over there?
No, I, I think there's higher and better uses. And, you know, maybe as we talk about higher and better uses, we've announced publicly that we're closing Sprout at Sirmac Plaza. We did that not because it was not doing well. In fact, it continues to do better and better. But the goal was always to make sure that that center was 100% occupied and be able to make a representation to other chains that were looking to come in, that this was the place to be. And so through the mayor's efforts, at this point, we're very close to being able to make some wonderful announcement of new tenanted going on at that property. But as a result of that, we've already been announced that we've lost our lease. And so we're excited that we've lost our lease, because that means something really good is coming down the road. And that public announcement will come shortly, that will bring significantly more tax revenues than what Sprout was doing or the boutique was doing. But you'll be looking at a fully occupied center once again as part of this.
And I sent all that information with the new tenant to the CEO. I haven't heard back from him. I sent it about three, four, or five days ago. So I'm going to give him a call, probably right after Thanksgiving, to see if he's, apparently he was led on by the one from the Heritage, something different, so.
Yeah, Tony has a, an exclusive ability to review any lease that provides any sort of food product whatsoever. If it's less than 17,000 square foot in size, and this particular store will be more than 17,000 square foot, so they have full ability to say no versus a formula-based approach.
We're working with them, though.
Well, let me just share a couple other activities with you, just so that you're aware of it. We went and started the construction up at 6209 Roosevelt. That will be our Art in the Park location. That will be turning over to the North Berwyn Park District. We had received a $250,000 grant from Cook County to go ahead and build this project. There's been a lot of public involvement and engagement on it, so we're pleased about that. And so that will open up by the spring of next year. Everything weather dependent on how things go. But a very positive reaction that we've had from both Oak Park residents and Berwyn residents. I think it would be fair to say that the, the Oak Park residents have been asked, as well as Berwyn residents, of how would you rate your community at doing and, and enhancing Roosevelt Road? And Berwyn got a D, B-plus from everybody, especially from the Oak Park people, and Oak Park got a D. So folks like the activity that's going on in the Berwyn side and the progress that you, Alderman, have been supporting. So that's 6209 Roosevelt, 3701 Harlem. The BDC will be closing on that property. That's the old Harlem Lounge. We worked with the abiding property owner, who has the two apartment buildings, with an agreement that they will then buy it for us at our expense. They will then tear down the building and make additional parking. So they have a total of 12 dwelling units over there with 12 parking spaces, which does not facilitate well for overnight guests. They'll be able to pick up roughly another 15 parking spots on that property. And as part of the purchase and acquisition, they have a requirement to demo the building. So I think that'll clean it up. The mayor and I had talked about why we love the, the issuance of the arts and just the history of the Harlem Lounge towards blues and music. It didn't have any parking really for itself, so it just encroached on the neighborhood. And that was probably good at one point in time, but in today's day, that's more of a detriment to the adjoining property and that's why they were interested in acquiring the same. We are hoping next year that we'll redo the Harlem Train Station, or excuse me, not the Harlem, the Depot Train Station. So that's as an improvement project for the coming year that we've got going on. And then I wanted to just show you an example of what we're able to do now on our website to give you update and the residents of the community an update on how the Finish Line Grant project is going. That is your incentive program for Roosevelt Road, for the Depot District and for Sirmac, on how the city's funds from the TIF are utilized to encourage redevelopment. So I'm going to ask Hannah Breaky on our staff. She's one of our newer team members. But she oversees the econ division and she's our management analyst. And she comes to us through Aurora and through Burr Ridge with her past background, working with municipalities. Hannah?
Thank you, Dave. So I started with the BDC in June and wanted to take a look at the different programs that we had. And one of the things that I noticed on, on our website was that it was kind of difficult to find information on the programs that we do offer to small businesses. And so one of the first things I dug into was our Finish Line Grant, which is one of our most popular programs that we offer. Businesses have a chance to get up to $50,000 in funding to help with infrastructure improvements, internal, external. So what we did, I'm going to try and talk and, and demonstrate at the same time, which apparently is not going to work. It's casting. Thank you. It's wireless. We didn't have wireless mics in Burr Ridge. All right. So if you were to visit the Berwyn website, it's kind of not as pretty anymore, sorry. It's going to take you, you can visit our Finish Line Grant page, which has information on our Finish Line Grant and how you can access it. The main thing I want to show you is the dashboard that, that we've been building out on our team. So you can scroll down and actually see where we're at on our projects, how many projects we currently have going on across the community that are approved and active. So that's people who are currently doing build-outs or finishing it up, but just haven't quite wrapped everything up. And then I'll click into this in a second. And then we also have how much our funding has been allocated towards Finish Line Grants. So I'll start with our status page. The, the main goal here is to help businesses see that they can access this funding, that it's available, that it happens. So if I were to show you the big version, which everyone can access, it's public information, fully transparent. We can, we can look and see that there are, that these four active projects, these are the four projects that have not quite wrapped up in Finish Line Grants. So if you guys wanted to go and, and visit the, the windows Mexican restaurant, you can see that they're, they're either actively working on it or just wrapping up a project. You're able to actually look at that. You're also able to tell, tell everyone how many projects we've completed throughout the entirety of the program right here in each TIF district. You can also sort it by district itself, and you can sort it by year. This came about primarily because we would get a lot of questions from people wanting to know, well, how, how do I get to be a part of this? Who else has done this? How do I find more information on this? Not just how to apply, but people want to understand what they can do. And so they're able to look into the projects and go check and see, okay, well, Output Lounge, they received a Finish Line Grant for almost 50K. If you guys haven't been to Output, I recommend going to check how amazing it looks. Part of that was funded through the Finish Line Grant program. So we're able to give businesses the information that they need to go and, and visit some of these other places that have gotten Finish Line Grants to see the types of projects that they can do. So that's the, the one dashboard. Helps to increase, again, transparency and make it easier for people to find information. All the way down to literally how many projects we've done. Sorry, I don't have a mouse. I have a touchpad. We're also able to look at, over the life of the Finish Line Grant project, since 2019, we've only had three applications that have been rescinded and that's, all of those were because we, they didn't meet the deadlines that they needed to meet, and we had to close that application at the end of the year. Most of those have reapplied and got it the next year. So that's the Finish Line Grant dashboard for just projects. And then I just wanted to show you what everybody really cares about is money. I have it built out, I say I, my team, I apologize. We've built out this board so that you can look and see that over the entirety of the project, all of our completed projects, we have spent almost $2 million in grants to small businesses to help them with their, their enhancement projects.
Can you do later, we could, or I can say that that's under public funds or private funds? In the development, the city's investment?
Yes. I will figure out how to add that into the dashboard. But at the very least, we do try to report that in our annual report on what you're able to get, what we able to help produce through commercial projects. So when you get our annual report, it usually contains a section of how much money was brought into the district through commercial projects each year. I'll work that into this. Thank you. So I just wanted you guys to be able to know that this is available. Sorry you all to know that this is available and that if you ever want to know, you know, how much Finish Line Grant dollars has come out of the, the Depot District, for instance, it's, it's readily available on our website now. And this has just kind of helped to increase transparency as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
I do want to mention, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. That this project was a joint project with me and Alexis. Alexis Alamo is our team member who also joined in June. I might have brought her with me from my previous employment. And she oversees the Finish Line Grants within the economic development project. So anybody who's trying to apply for one, Alexis is your gal. Thank you.
Any questions on the Finish Line Grant?
No, thank you very much. This is really cool to see and love the, the dashboard. If there was a question, it would be more so around like benchmarking. Do we need more help to issue more grants or to get that, that notification out there?
We need Aldermen to go walk their boards in the, in the TIF district and encourage the businesses that are there to bring investment improvement to contact us.
Okay.
And so we often do these walks down the corridors. And we always invite the Aldermen, that they come with a meet written statement and element that you're there to support them.
So in the most, most of the referrals that we do get are either from businesses that have taken part of it or that heard about it from Aldermen. So the more people that you can tell, the better. And then just, I want to mention that we are looking at ways to build out dashboards similar to this for a lot of the other functions that we, we do facilitate at the BDC. It's transparent and easy for everyone to find information.
No, for the, each of the TIF districts, we budget $250,000 for it. And if we needed more money, we could go ahead and move things around to make that happen. We have not had the need thus far. It would be a nice problem to have, to perhaps go ahead and find more money to continue out to the businesses and to make improvements in their boards.
How far does the Harlem District go?
Harlem District is a little bit of a misnomer, really, Sirmac. On Harlem itself, it goes down to the high school. 26th Street goes north, just to the north side of Sirmac Road itself, where Berwyn Gateway is. So you can see that there. But it, and when I first got here, one of the things the mayor encouraged me to do was saying, how do we help the east end of Sirmac? The west end of Sirmac is doing really well financially. So we got a joint agreement between all the school districts and the other governmental bodies to extend the TIF district geographically, to go from puncture where the laundromat is on the south side all the way to Lombard Avenue. And we created a very unique intergovernmental agreement where we baseline the TIF off of that particular year. And any new increments that were generated, either through inflation or redevelopment, then would be issued side checks to each of the other governmental units that came to them outside of property taxes. So last year, I want to say we gave away almost, the city gave away almost a million dollars of past increment financing dollars out of the Sirmac TIF back to the governmental units on that corridor.
It was refunded to those units that would have, that lost that money because they went into the TIF, so it was refunded to them.
So it's really worked out well to help redevelopment occur on that corridor, because we're able to take the success of the west end and apply it to the east end. And my role for looking at next year is really talking about the Roosevelt Road corridor and saying, how can we pay more attention to that east end of it, which is a little bit more challenging, frankly, because-
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Dave, can I ask, sorry, if we can go back, could I just ask a couple of questions about what you were presenting on before?
Sixty-eight oh four?
Yeah, not about sixty-eight oh four. You just had a couple of questions, actually, one is about sixty-eight oh four. If, if there's a business that expresses interest in space in that building, is there somebody that they should reach out to?
Sure, reach out to me and I'll make sure that we make the proper contact-
Okay.
-and assist that.
Okay.
Anybody that's ever looking for a space in Berwyn, when they come to my office, I just tell them, call Dave. He'll set them up at the proper party then, yeah.
Perfect. Also, you mentioned the, some project happening with the Berwyn Depot Station. Can you say more about that?
Yeah, last year, the mayor and I had talked and we, we were talking about changes that had happened at the train station with the ticket agent leaving and it going to vending machines. And we're recognizing that we do a lot of nice activities in the Depot District, but we have no public bathroom for people to utilize. So the idea was to take the back area of the ticket booth station, keep the actual architecture that exists there of its historic nature, but then to, and put a handicap bathroom in the back. That space is also, the front face-
That space has also, the front face has not been touched in eons. You know, the city does not own it. It's owned by BNSF, it's in East Metro, and neither of which care about it. But any improvements we want to do, we have to go ahead and run through them. So some of the things that we've seen that that need attention is the HVAC system that's in the building, the windows that are there, a touch-up of all the wood to clean it up, and the benches as well that are back in there, removal of the safe, just tidying up the space, making some ability for hotspots for people to turn.
So it's a far of a million dollar investment that we're looking to make at that location.
And after we do that one, then we can talk about, do we go do Harlem next after that? But the mayor was insistent that it, that we really need to provide the attention, that we do special events, that we have a place for people to use public bathrooms. So it would not be open during regular train hours. It would only be when we have a special event that we would talk about using this.
Yeah, Harlem's a newer building, so we started with this one because it's the most used. There's no concrete architectural plans or anything at this point. There's just a bunch of ideas that we've had, that's about it, so.
Any cost sharing with Metro or BNSF or they?
Do you want me to laugh out loud or should we all do it together?
I just did. So, so with the train stations, it's generally our responsibility to maintain them even though they own them. So that that's why we're not even.
Sounds good.
Not counting on any of that.
We we will do a couple of other improvements. We're going to go ahead and do a underground burial of bringing the power from there over to the northwest corner of Grove and Windsor for the purpose of a holiday tree. And that same space could then be used for a sculpture demonstration for the arts. The tree that we bought is actually right now over at Freedom Middle School. So if you want to go buy it, we just couldn't get the power to that location in a timely manner because of the hoops and hurdles we have to go through to BNSF.
Thank you.
Dayouts? Okay, I have nothing else from committee of the whole. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Logic by Babon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. See you back in a little while. Thank you.
Yeah.
For you and I are pulling in the metro. When we go in the metro. But it is a great idea. We're always there. We'll talk through candidates all the time. It's a great idea, but. There's the other part. And then they hang about and say, okay. Something tells somebody, it's not a ballpark.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I was just like thinking, you know, some people. We go here in twenty twenty. If, um, you know, other than cleaning up the construction stuff. It looks pretty much insane. It's hard to play, you know, come to people like. Oh, now it's actually forced. But if we're gonna be doing that. Yeah, it's like, things like.
There's no good use of. And then. Oh. So you can get back to it. Great. The problem then on the interior. You come in and raid and you got stairs and you have offices. You don't have any for an elevator or a balloon. So you're gonna lose space running that into it. Just to get that space on top of it. That sort of kills that building in itself. And then they mishandle the building over there. Because it has plastic core ceilings. It's all solid concrete. But when they. Second roof. They shot into this. They tried to do the roof gap. And it's going all the way through. It's like too long way to use it.
I'm just thinking about all the micro cracks that occur. And then the. All the same shit is. Waiting to fall down.
So I just wanna take it now. And say that's a perfect space. Both of them are the block pieces about the same size as your. But together, and you can add in the streets. The streets with it. You can get the almost. So the tree, why that's important. And how the meter. You create another six percent. And so we need to see like. I think that's why the board is setting up. And we run the reservations. But I still believe that existing principles holding of the allies. Hasn't been actually been there. As like. So something like. Something like. Dog simulator.
The puppet house?
Puppet house.
Yeah. They're looking for a space or something?
They are.
Okay.
But it's always trying to get that. He said, come here. The puppet. Well, he had a lot of candy. And we have some exposed.
Yeah.
We only have a game. We give the trip. Across the property. Three thousand thirty-five thousand. So do I.
Exactly.
And it's not there.
It's not there. And also the, um. It's a little more difficult too, I'm sure, for their. Business model. Because I'm sure they need big trucks and possibly even semis. Like having semis down. Those are the things in that area.
Well, it's not such a scary thing. Some streets. I live there. I'd rather get. I know that. And then you would be able to. And have to. The trail. On the street.
Yeah. 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 Thank you. Good luck.
No more magazines. Just in two years. I am so sorry to say absolutely nothing.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are you going? Are you going to do that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So.
You know, it's really nice. Good. Yeah, where'd you go? Nice. I hope you got some. Oh, yeah, the desert bag's all right. So you just want. Hey, those are the grownups?
No, it's like the kids.
Oh, you took. Oh, I see. I mean, they're vacation. Where were you saying you go?
Yeah.
Oh, fun.
That's Gary. Gary. Don't be your best friend.
Hello, Jess.
You come to work every day?
Uh.
It is almost seven.
I need some water.
So the treasurer? He runs for twenty years. Why is that?
Um. When looking at it in other scenes.
Oh, I really see everybody. Or no, you wanted.
They can limit it somewhere.
Why, I just. I just was going wide for the reading on that.
Most of the other cities. I think we're short too to have a.
I mean, it means ever. That's just one more person.
Yeah. I'm gonna make a mission. Oh.
Much.
Yeah.
That's it. Yeah. Have my phone? I said, does it just type?
All right. Did you just ask about?
But they're all.
Yes. Absolutely.
Depends on the town. Sometimes you treasure both. At least.
How do you feel about here? In terms of showing your local. Water power?
Well, there are a lot of boards.
Yeah.
There are different boards and. The president.
I think I have the same question. Was it attracting her or?
No, it was. It was based off of what I was looking at in other cities as well. And then basically just like.
No, I'm trying to find stuff that will inform. Because. Leja did his work there. And then the Berwyn shops are doing a toy draw.
Thank you so much.
And I saw. You know, to get traffic there and just get more. Or more business.
But I'm just wanting to.
Do you enjoy it?
Yeah.
Talking about.
I mean, because it needs people out.
Yeah. Uh, the treasurer? City treasurer? Yeah. You don't want.
To add that.
Yeah. Yeah. That's great. That's what we want.
I'll park that tonight.
No, you're okay.
Trying to try to get some.
I used to. I used to. He was a DJ, so. I am. Sometimes like.
Right?
Clerk Garcia, can we call the city council meeting in order, please?
Good eve- good evening, Caldwell.
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Leja?
Here.
Faith?
Here.
Pabon?
Here.
Palashak?
Here.
Brockman?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Aide Ismeir?
Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God. Indivisible and evergreen, just as for all.
If we could please keep in our thoughts and prayers, the family of Vincent, Vinnie Verzucca. Mother to our city attorney, Anthony Verzucca. All men and women. Thank you. Anybody wish to address open forum? Step forward to the podium, please.
Uh, Louis Chaba, Sixteenth and Virgilin. So, uh, a couple of pieces of gratitude, um, regarding this weekend agenda tonight. So, um, thank you to Alderman Carmichael for informing residents about the egregious conflict of interest uh, in one of the agenda items to waive the sealed bid process for a company that will not only cost taxpayers more, but also lines the pockets of Mayor Lovero with over ten thousand dollars in funds. Uh, thank you to Alderman Pabon for introducing the ordinance on capping term limits. Uh, voting yes to that is a no-brainer. It's really a no-brainer to Mayor Lovero's usual yes man and woman. Um, good leaders cultivate new leaders. Good leaders cultivate new leaders. They don't turn their seats into thrones. Uh, thank you to all the residents who have spoken out over several years about the horrible previous job that, uh, the city had always done decorating a holiday tree. Uh, it took years, 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 uh, but it actually looks great this year. So I'd like to thank all the volunteers who made that happen. And let's be honest, though, if the mayor and aldermen think the city can afford, uh, two hundred seventy-five percent raises for themselves, then I think you all can afford the paper of the people that actually did the work on the tree this year. It should not be a volunteer job.
And last?
Last, but most important. Thank you to Rep. Aldonazza Rashid, his phenomenal chief of staff, Nida Alwali, who have been an invaluable resource to the Berwin Cicero Rapid Response Team, uh, both on the ground and ongoing consistently since all these issues began. Uh, and who yesterday worked with partners like the Arab American Family Service and the Berwin Township to supply impacted families with turkeys and sides across Berwin and Cicero. Uh, thank you to all the rapid response members who helped deliver those donations and who also helped deliver donations, uh, in the efforts that were organized by Mano a Man Unidos. Our community has been through incredibly difficult times the last several months. Thank you to everyone who made the time to show impacted families some love and care. Thank you.
Anybody else? And for the record, the facility's manager withdrew item J seven, so will that be on the agenda for tonight? Uh, city treasurer, you have something to open for?
I just speak too loud. I'm a mom, so let me see that. It's a little rusty.
So, um, Alderman Leja had his tree lighting events over at the Berwin Shops, and they were a huge success, and the Berwin Shop members expressed wanting to have more events there. And I'm just bringing this message to any aldermen that wanna host anything there. And they had, Leja had just dropped off a box for Toys for Tots. And they were worried about, how are we gonna get people to know to drop off the toys and whatnot? So I thought it would be great if we could support them on December sixth, and we'll leave some flyers out there from four to six. Um, what I plan to do is purchase, um, hot chocolate and cocoa, I'm sorry, coffee and hot chocolate from them, brownie bites, and support the small business. And for anybody that, uh, drops off or donates a new toy, we would offer them Berwin bucks or let them spin the wheel and get Berwin bucks so that, again, they can spend the money there at the shops. The shops end like right around Christmas, so they only have whatever, like the next thirty days to really sell all they can. And if you've met some of these dynamic, uh, women and men, I just encourage you to go out. And I, and I thank, um, Alderman Joshua, 'cause he said he dressed up as a Grinch there. And so if anyone else wants to join us, I'll leave the flyer out there, and then we'll just blast this on social media.
Okay. Alderman, anything for open forum?
Yes, I have also, um, December sixth, from noon to two. So actually, you could do both. Come to Claw City for my annual meet Santa, and then go to Libby's, uh, and get the shops. Thirty-two hundred Oak Park Avenue is Claw City. We'll have popcorn, hot chocolate, and I will be giving coins to each child as they come in, and they can play the Claw City all day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Item C one, please.
Um, sorry, Mayor, we have also, um, some communication that I disseminated to all council. And then I also have on the clerk's department, through the township and through the city, with the help and correlation with State Senator, uh, Mike Borfideo and Rep. Rashid, uh, whistle kit packaging, um, and Annoia Wright's presentation this Saturday from two to four at the Flower Cafe stand on Windsor.
Okay. Item C one, then, please.
Item C one are the approval of minutes from committee of the whole and regular city council meeting minutes from November twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Be by motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole and regular city council meeting of November twelfth as presented.
Second.
Motion by Faith, second by Brockman to approve the minutes for the committee of the whole and regular council meeting of November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E one, please.
Item E one is a communication from Berwin Development Corporation Director Holsberg. The third quarter twenty twenty-five BDC report for informational.
I move to accept the Berwin Development Corporation's third quarter twenty twenty-five report as informational.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Caldwell, second by Pabon to consider the communication as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Gary takes nice picture, Dave. Okay. Item G one, please.
Item G one is the handicap parking sign determinations from thirty-six oh seven Winona Avenue for approved. Eighteen twenty-three Grove Avenue approved. Thirty thirty-seven South Clarence Avenue approved. And twenty-two twenty-four Scoville Avenue approved.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be my recommendation of motion to approve the handicap parking signs. Determinations by thirty-six oh seven Winona approved. Eighteen twenty-three Grove approved. Thirty thirty-seven Clarence approved. And twenty-two twenty-four Scoville approved.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, second by Pabon to concur with the city clerk and approve the handicap signs at thirty-six oh seven Winona, eighteen twenty-three Grove, thirty thirty-seven Clarence, and twenty-two twenty-four Scoville. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item G two, please.
Item G two is a communication regarding handicap parking sign determination. Eighteen thirty-eight Clinton Avenue, deny.
I move to accept the clerk's recommendation to deny the handicap parking sign determination at eighteen thirty-eight Clinton.
Second.
Okay, everybody second at the same time. Brockman and Carmichael. Brock, motion by Brockman, second by Carmichael to, uh, concur with the denial of the handicap spot at eighteen thirty-eight Clinton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I one, please.
Item I one is a communication from Alderman Brockman. Building and zoning alderman committee meeting minutes from November fifth, twenty twenty-five.
I move to accept.
I move to accept the building and zoning committee minutes from the November fifth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes from the twenty twenty five meeting as informational, uh, by Brockman, seconded by Palacek, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, item J one, please.
Item J one is city attorney Bertucca to authorize settlement twenty twenty five L zero zero three zero eight two in the amount of thirty five thousand dollars.
Be my motion, concur with city attorney Bertucca and settle case two zero two five L zero zero three zero eight two, amount of thirty five thousand dollars based on authority granted in executive session.
Second. Motion by Faith, seconded by Bowman to concur with attorney Bertucca and settle the caption case for the amount of thirty five thousand dollars as approved by, uh, uh, executive session, all those in favor on the call the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palashak.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aides Mayor.
Motion carried, item J two, please.
Item J two is city attorney Bertucca's communication to authorize settlement twenty four W C zero zero three six nine seven in the amount of forty two thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty six cents.
Be my motion to concur with city attorney Bertucca and settle case two four W C zero zero three six nine seven, the amount of forty two thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty six cents granted in executive session.
Second. Motion by Faith, seconded by Bowman to concur with attorney Bertucca and settle the workers' comp case in the amount of forty two thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty six cents, uh, based on authority granted executive session, all those in favor on the call the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palashak.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aides Mayor.
Motion carried, item J three, please.
Item J three is a communication from deputy chief fellows, request for authorization to purchase two vehicles, one twenty twenty five Ford Interceptor utility and one Chevrolet, Chevrolet Trailblazer from Carl Automotive Group in the total amounts of sixty nine thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars.
I move that we concur with deputy chief fellows' request for a waiver of the sealed bid process and authorization to purchase two new vehicles, a twenty twenty five Ford Interceptor utility and a twenty twenty five Chevrolet Trailblazer from Carl Automotive Groups, which is more competitive than that available through the suburban purchasing cooperative, funded through the general fund allocated for police capital projects for a total cost of sixty nine thousand one hundred twenty four dollars.
Second. Motion by Leja, seconded by Palacek to concur with deputy chief fellows and approve the purchase of the two vehicles for the total cost of sixty nine thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars, waive the sealed bid process, all those in favor on the call the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palashak.
Aye.
Brockman.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aides Mayor.
Motion carried, item J four, please.
Item J four is deputy chief fellows' communication to request for authorization to seek R F Q for police department rooftop generator.
I move that we concur with deputy chief fellows' request for authorization to seek an R F Q, request for quote, for the police department rooftop generator.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Caldwell to concur with deputy chief fellows and allow the, them to seek an R F Q for the police department rooftop generator, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, item J five, please.
Item J five is a communication from Alderman Pabon, a resolution of the city council of the city of Berwyn, Illinois, directing the city clerk to certify a public question regarding term limits for elected officials to the Cook County clerk for inclusion on the ballot at a regular election.
Be my motion to adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Berwyn, Illinois, directing the city clerk to certify a public question regarding term limits for elected officials to Cook County clerks for inclusion on the ballot at a regular election with an amendment to add city treasurer to three-year term limit as well and authorize the corporate authorities to affix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second. Okay, you've amended this because, did you say all elected officials risen?
Uh, I think in there, though, in the question, it might not have treasurer.
So just answer.
So we can just make sure.
Motion by Pabon, seconded by Palacek to adopt the resolution as amended, including the city treasurer, directing the city clerk to certify the public question regarding term limits for elected officials to be included in the next, uh, regular election, all those in favor on the call the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palashak.
Aye.
Brockman.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aides Mayor.
Motion carried, item J six, please.
Item J six is a resolution from Alderman Pabon, a resolution protecting nonprofit organizations and charitable foundations from politically motivated federal targeting.
Be my motion to adopt a resolution protecting nonprofit organizations and charitable foundations in Berwyn from politically motivated federal targeting. Thank our nonprofit partners that work in Berwyn and outside of Berwyn and service our communities, um, and ensure them that they don't have to be worried about being, uh, losing their status or being targeted by the federal government. Um, authorize the corporate authorities to fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second. Motion by Pabon, seconded by Bowman, to adopt the resolution protecting nonprofit organizations and charitable foundations from politically motivated federal targeting, affix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage, all those in favor on the call the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Faith.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palashak.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aides Mayor.
Motion carried, alderman and committee meetings, Alderman Caldwell.
Call of the chair.
Alderman Bowman.
Call of the chair.
Alderman Leja.
Call of the chair.
Alderman Faith.
Call of the chair.
Alderman Pabon.
Call of the chair.
Alderman Palacek.
Call of the chair.
Alderman Brockman.
Call of the chair.
Alderman Carmichael.
I have a ward meeting on December sixth, so next Saturday at eleven AM at the Jovales Activity Center, we'll be discussing, um, the participatory budgeting ideas. And I will call the chair, make a motion to adjourn, want a happy Thanksgiving.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Carmichael, seconded by Palacek, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, everybody have a safe and happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Thank you.